All right. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I work with Eagles Environmental Support Division. So I'm going to be moderating the meeting tonight. So we're here tonight to do an information session and a public hearing immediately following that for Riverview Energy Systems LLC. And we've got a great group of staff here for you tonight, and I'm going to be introducing them in just a minute. But before we get to those sort of official introductions, I do want to have Dr. Jay Oligar, which is Air Quality Division's Assistant Division Director, just officially welcome you all to the meeting tonight. So, Dr. Oligar, if you want to just turn your camera on and just make sure you're unmuting yourself and you should be good to go.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sure can.
Okay. Well, I'd like to personally thank all of you for taking time out of your evening to participate in this informational session and public hearing. So the draft permit that is the subject of the hearing is written with the public and the environment in mind. So public participation is very important to us and a vital way to work toward Eagles' mission of protecting public health and the environment. Public participation also creates opportunities for conversation and discussion on the proposed permit changes. And we especially appreciate your flexibility in participating with us virtually, given the challenges posed by the current pandemic. So we know this method of participation is not perfect, and we welcome your thoughts as we continually look for ways to improve our outreach. I will be listening tonight, so my decision on the proposed permit keeps you, your comments, and your concerns in mind. Thank you again for joining us. And at this time, Jennifer, I'll turn things back to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, Dr. Oligar is going to be hanging around for the entire evening tonight, specifically during the public comment period at the end. So he'll use all of the questions and comments in making his decision. So I'm going to just invite the rest of the staff that is here with me tonight to turn your cameras on really quickly. And if you guys want to just unmute yourself, just so I can make sure that you're showing up for everybody here. I'm going to go through the list really quickly. So the first person I want to introduce is Lauren McGirl, and she is the permit engineer for this permit application. You're going to primarily be hearing from her tonight as well as the inspector, John Lamb. So they're going to be doing most of the chatting with you in the information session when we're presenting information. But the rest of the panel will be available for question and answer when we get to that part. So the other person I want to introduce to you is Doreen Lehner, and Doreen is one of the toxicologists that we have working with us in Air Quality Division. So toxicologists develop health-based screening levels of toxic air contaminants. That's one of their big jobs, especially with what they do with developing permits. So when we write our permits, those screening levels have to be, or the limits, I'm sorry, have to be less than the screening level. So if anyone has questions on toxic air contaminants, we have Doreen on tonight to help us answer those. I'm also going to introduce Stephanie Hanksbaugh, and she is our air modeler. So what she does is she works with a computer model to look at where the pollutants that are being requested might impact the community and making sure that those are going to meet the air quality standards. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. I know that was very, very broad for everybody. So I don't want to let you know that that's going to be the main, the only thing we're going to hear from Stephanie tonight. So then we also have Erica Wolf on, and she works in our monitoring section, and she can help with questions about that, as well as talking about non-attainment and things like that. So we have a great group of staff with us tonight. I'm really excited to be able to chat with everybody. And Lauren, if you want to keep your camera on, John and the rest of the folks, if you guys want to turn yours off for now, and we'll present though, everybody else in a little bit when we get to the panel section. Jay, if you want to turn your camera off, you're more than welcome to do that as well. Just going to run through a few housekeeping things really quickly, let you know how the evening is going to progress. So we're going to basically have two sections of the night. So I want to be very, very clear about this, that first, we're going to have an information session, and during the information session, Lauren and John are going to be presenting information about what the company is asking for, and then a little bit about how we do our jobs and how the review for the permit was done. And then we're going to get to a question and answer session. So that's when the panelists that you just met are going to turn their cameras back on. We're going to be opening up for questions from all of you. You can either, and I'll go over this in a minute, type your questions in, or we can have you raise your hands and unmute you to ask some verbally, and we'll be able to respond to those questions. So after we're done with that information session, we're going to go to a public hearing. So during the public hearing, we will not be responding to your comments. That's just for you to be able to make comments on the record for Jay to use, for Dr. Oligar to use when he's making his decision on this proposed project. After the hearing, and that's going to be kind of an official, kind of wonky thing, if you haven't participated in one of those before, I am going to go over other ways that you can submit official comments. So a lot of times people come to these meetings, and this might be the first time they're really getting information about the proposed project or getting to ask questions, and they're not quite ready to make a comment. That's completely, completely fine. We have more time after this hearing is over for you to submit comments, and I'll talk to you about ways that that can be done. I'm also going to tell you about some places where you can find more information about this proposed project, if you're interested, or even just other actions that the Air Quality Division has open for comment right now. And then I'm going to pull up a slide that talks a little bit about who you can contact if you have other questions. All right, so a little bit other things on housekeeping here before I pass it over to Lauren. All of your lines are going to be muted during the meeting. So like I said, when we get to the question and answer portion or the hearing portion, if you want to speak out loud, we're more than happy to let you do that. And we are recording this meeting. We post all of our public hearings on our YouTube channel, so that's youtube.michigan eagle. I could be lying about that. I'll make sure that I'm right later. So if you're interested in any past events, you can view those there as well. So like I mentioned, that question and answer box might be a good friend for you tonight. If you have questions as Lawrence chatting, feel free to just, you know, put them in there as they come up in your head. You don't need to wait until the end to do that. And if you want to speak your question out loud, or when we get to the comment portion, we'll go over this again. You can click that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen as well. And we don't have anybody calling in, but if we do, I'll just remind them that they just need to press pound two on their phone to virtually raise their hand for me. So Lauren, I know you've been waiting, so I will pass it over to you. If you want to go ahead and just share your screen, I'll make sure everything's working good for the audience.
Thank you, Jennifer. I just want to make sure you can hear me okay.
Yep, you sound good and it looks good, so you should be good to go.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Lauren McGirl, and I'm a permit engineer for the application submitted by Riverview Energy Systems LLC or Riverview. I worked with the team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the application and draft permit conditions. Before we get into the details of the Riverview proposal, I'm going to briefly talk about what the air quality does and how the permitting process works. Air pollution comes from many different sources, including power plants, fuel-burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. The overview, the overall mission of the Air Quality Division is to protect public health and the environment. We provide the production by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. The Air Quality Division staff do many things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at different air toxics to make sure public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities and re-review applications and write permits of sources of air fluids, like the application Riverview submitted, which we are talking about tonight. We do all this to make sure the sources comply with the air quality rules and regulations in place to protect public health. The Air Quality Division has the authority to permit sources of air fluids. However, I want to point out a few items the draft permit does not cover, and that's because we don't have the ability to regulate them. These include zoning, where the facility chooses to locate noise and traffic on public roads. If you have any questions or concern about these issues, please reach out to your local government. I'd like to give you a simple overview process of the air permitting. First, the company decides they want to install, modify, or construct a source of air emissions, like what Riverview has proposed. The company then submits a permit application. The application is reviewed by an engineer like myself, who reviews the information from the company to decide if the requests can meet the state and federal air quality regulations. During the review, other air quality staff are involved to help with different parts of the review. This includes the review of the toxic air contaminants and how the emissions may impact the surrounding community. If these rules and regulations are met, the engineer creates a draft permit, which is agreed upon with the AQD District Inspector and the company. If public comment is required, as in this case, a draft permit is posted for public comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, which is why we're talking with you tonight. Once the comment period ends, we evaluate all the comments. The comments can lead to changes in the permit and the final decision. Finally, a decision is made on that permit application. This decision can be approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes, or to deny the permit. This decision is based on whether the company's proposed project can meet the air quality regulations. We cannot base our decision on the need or the popularity of the project. Riverview is requesting an air permit, also called a permit to install, or a PTI, as we call it, for a new renewable natural gas plant or an RNG plant located on leased land from the city of Riverview at 20,000 Grange Road in Riverview, Michigan. To create gas for a plant like this, Riverview would need, would like to treat landfill gas created by the breakdown of waste in the landfill. In order to change the landfill gas into pipeline gas, the plant would need to treat the gas to meet the pipeline quality standards, and then it would be compressed for use as natural gas into the pipeline, or it will be used at the existing turbines at Riverview. Before we get to the details of the proposed permit, I'd like to talk about the purpose of a PTI. A project like this cannot be installed unless it's been thoroughly reviewed and the air permit is approved. This way, we know the project can meet the air quality rules and regulations. An air permit has conditions or rules that the company are required to follow. These conditions make sure the company will meet the air quality rules and regulations that protect public health. These conditions have emission limits, restrictions on how the process operates, which can include air pollution control devices, monitoring, record keeping, and testing for air emissions. Later, we'll talk about the proposed permit conditions for Riverview. While reviewing the project, like Riverview has requested, we look at a number of different things. Based on the proposed level of emissions and equipment, we determine what type of technical review is needed, including which rules and regulations apply to this project. When doing this, we use the worst-case assumptions. We evaluate the pollutant emissions to ensure they meet health-based standards set by the federal government. Computer modeling, computer simulations referred to as modeling, were done for this project. This computer simulations put imaginary air measuring devices in hundreds of locations around the area Riverview wants to build. These imaginary monitors look at whether emissions would be below the standards. I'll talk about the computer modeling in a little bit. We also evaluate the proposed toxic air contaminants emissions to ensure they would meet the AQD screening levels. We make sure that the air pollution control devices, if necessary, to limit air emissions so they can meet the state and federal regulations. Let's talk a little bit about the health-based standards. I know this slide has a lot of acronyms, but I want to talk to you about the six pollutants called criteria pollutants. The criteria pollutants are particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, ozone, and lead. Criteria pollutants have health-based levels called the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, or NACs. The NACs are health-based levels set by the federal government and apply to ambient air. Ambient air essentially means outdoor air, so these standards are set for the air the general public breathes. The NACs are developed from research studies and are designed to protect against health issues like heart and lung problems, learning problems, and premature death. Part of the review of this permit application included using the computer model to make sure the NACs would be met. The company submitted the results of the modeling for all criteria pollutants except for lead. The modeling results were reviewed by our staff and then compared to the NACs. Based on the review, the proposed emissions would be below the standards. Remember, when we're looking at how pollutants from the proposed project may impact the community, our main concern is the air the public may breathe or the ambient air. The public is, sorry, the public is assumed not to be on the property used by the company or anything inside the fence line, or the property boundary is not considered ambient air. As shown on the map, the fence line of the property is in yellow. This map shows how the modeling was set up. The little yellow dots are 100 imaginary air monitors. The computer checks to see if the project emissions will meet the NACs. These dots are all in the ambient air and that the public can assume to be in contact with, because Riverview is requesting to have three different ways to operate the RNG plant. They did model for all three scenarios, and we looked at the worst case and looked at those potential impacts, and we evaluated those. Even the worst-case emissions would not exceed the NACs or the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. In addition to the NACs, Michigan has its own health-based screening levels or other pollutants called toxic air contaminants or TACs. During the review, potential air impacts are compared to the AQD's health-based screening levels. The screening levels are developed to protect against health problems like developing cancers or breathing problems. Our review of the proposed emissions determined they would not violate the health-based screening levels. Part of knowing which rules we need to look at for the project is understanding where the facility is located. This map shows the current attainment status for the state of Michigan. An area is considered to be non-attainment if the air concentrations of certain pollutants are above the national standards. Michigan currently has non-attainment areas for two different pollutants, ozone and sulfur dioxide, or SO2, as shown on the map. Riverview is requesting to locate the RNG plant in a part of Wayne County, which is considered a non-attainment for SO2 and ozone. For our purposes during the review, we regulate ozone by limiting to other pollutants, volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, and oxides of nitrogen, or NOx. When an area is a non-attainment, like this area, the rules are set to allow for growth while limiting impacts. So if the overall increases in emissions from the project for these pollutants is over a certain level, then those pollutants need to go through a more stringent review called non-attainment permit review. In this case, for Riverview's project, the potential emissions were not high enough to require this type of review. This map shows where the air monitors are located around the area, when the proposed equipment will be located. The monitors at Allen Park measure criteria pollutants and black carbon, which is a component of diesel exhaust. It also collects routine weather-related things like wind speed, wind direction, and temperature. More data on this monitor or the other ones, please look at our website. In the following slides, I'll give a summary of the proposed project. Riverview is proposing to install a renewable natural gas plant, which includes equipment to reduce emissions, a thermal oxidizer and a recuperative thermal oxidizer. It also has a small natural gas boiler and a flare. Riverview asked to be permitted for three different ways to operate this plant. We reviewed all three scenarios and evaluated the worst case. The first scenario is when the RNG plant is operating normally and will meet the gas line pipeline specifications. This means the gas will enter the pipeline or be burned in the turbines at the facility that have been previously permitted. Any gas not going through either of those will be controlled with a thermal oxidizer or a recuperative thermal oxidizer, depending on where it's at in the process. The second scenario is when the gas bypasses the RNG plant and is controlled by a flare. The last scenario is when the RNG plant is operating. However, the gas isn't meeting the pipeline specifications and must be flared. The proposed draft conditions contain requirements to make sure the emissions that they actually will emit will not exceed in what we reviewed. This includes the proper use, monitoring, and operation of the equipment and any control devices. There is a restriction for the annual amount of biogas for the flare. Annual emission limits are also in the permit, and they will be showing compliance with those by having monthly H2S gas sample. Next, I'm going to have handed off to John.
Hi, I'm John Lamb. I'm an inspector with Air Quality Division out of the Detroit office, and I'm the assigned inspector for Riverview Land Preserve and Riverview Energy Systems. They are two separate companies, but it's considered one stationary source for us, and they are subject to the Title V program. As such, we do, and we're required to do inspections there at a minimum once every two years. I usually go do an inspection at each facility on an annual basis. An inspection involves a physical site visit, looking at all the equipment, doing a walk around the facility, checking the control equipment and all emission units. It also involves a record review. In addition to the normal inspection stuff we do, we also investigate complaints in the area. So I'm in the area quite often to investigate complaints related to the landfill operations. And we also do review the annual emission report that's submitted by both Riverview Energy Systems and Riverview Land Preserve on an annual basis. I think that's all I have, Lauren.
All right, I think that's back to me, right? Or do you have a little bit more, Lauren?
No, it's back to you.
All right. That is what I thought. So I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen. So thanks, both of you. I really appreciate it. If I can have my panelists, besides Dr. Oligar, if you want to leave your camera off, you can for now. But the rest of you, if you want to turn your cameras on a minute, we're going to go ahead and just get to the question and answer portion. So I'm just letting you all know right now, I don't have any questions in the question box. So I want to just go over again. If you want to ask a question, you can. Just feel free to type your question in that question and answer box. Or if you feel strongly about speaking your question out loud, you can use that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. I don't have any call-in folks right now, so we don't have to worry about that instruction. All right. I'm just going to put this up right now and go remind everybody who we have on the panel. So you guys heard from Lauren, and you heard from John. Lauren is the permit engineer, and then John is the inspector for the facility. Then we have Stephanie Hanksbaugh, and she was our air modeler. Doreen Lehner works in our toxics unit, and then Erica Wolf works in our air monitoring unit. But she also is pretty familiar with our non-attainment information too. So if anyone has questions on that, I know that she is more than capable of answering. So I'm just going to hang out for a couple minutes here and just see if anybody has any questions or wants to raise their hand to ask one. I don't want to rush anybody, because I know sometimes it takes a minute to actually get those questions typed in, especially when it's a complicated facility like this one. All right. So Brian Webb, I do see that your hand is up, so hold on for one second. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you so you can ask your question. So you, there you go. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not sure who you want to direct this question to for an answer. But the question is, after reading through the technical fact sheet, the nitrogen dioxide level is predicted to exceed the PSD sill, but still remain below the NAAQS limit. And my question would be, is, is the high sill indicative that residents in close proximity should have concerns even if it's below the NAAQS level?
So Lauren, do you want to talk a little bit about that part of the evaluation?
That is a very good question. I think Stephanie would have a better information than I would have, because it's dealing with modeling.
Okay, perfect. Stephanie, I know you're on, so if you want to unmute yourself and then talk to Brian's question, that would be great.
Yes, I can go ahead and answer that. That is, that is a very good question, and you are correct that nitrogen dioxide was the only pollutant that was over the significant impact level. Basically, no, it is not a health concern if impacts are below that significant impact level. That significant impact level is set by EPA, and what they do is just have that level for all criteria pollutants, that if impacts from a facility are below that level, then they deem that as being low enough that they're not concerned it's going to have any health effects for the area. So again, that is set by EPA. What happens is modeling is kind of a threefold, I guess, analysis. And it starts out with a project, and that is what we compare to the significant impact level. And in this instance, like you said, the one-hour nitrogen dioxide was above that. So in turn, it was just, that's just a trigger level that, okay, if impacts are above that, we want to go and do a more thorough analysis. So with that, for one-hour NOx, we did modeling again. We included the permit emissions. We included additional sources, I believe, if I remember correctly, there were nine sources nearby or additional sources in the area that we then added to the model. So we wanted more an additive impact or a cumulative impact, looking at the facility, looking at neighboring additional sources. And like I said, I think there were nine of them. Most of them were bigger facilities northeast of, of the Riverview area. And then we did include background concentrations of one-hour NOx. So what we wanted to do is just make sure that that cumulative impact is now below that National Ambient Air Quality Standard that EPA sets. So really, that sill level is just kind of a trigger that EPA set for the different criteria pollutants to determine if more modeling is needed for pollutant or not.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Stephanie. Brian, did you have a follow-up on that, or was that helpful?
Yes.
Yeah, follow-up, but also a statement that I appreciate you did the cumulative analysis as well. And the follow-up question would be, hearing that the Allen Park Monitoring Station is the closest one to this proposed facility, and hearing that it only really is there to measure diesel particulates, would NO2 be something that that station can monitor? And if not, where is the closest monitoring station that would measure those levels of NO2?
So that's a good question. I know, Stephanie, do you know if the model incorporated any NOx or nitrogen dioxides from that monitoring station? And then, and if you don't know which one is the closest, I think Erica might know that too.
You know, one thing I did do in the analysis that, that I did, the background monitor you want to add into this model is one that really does not pick up emissions from sources you're adding into the model itself. So we did select kind of a more, I don't believe, I guess, first of all, I don't believe Allen Park, and I guess Erica, maybe you can fill in if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that that does monitor for nitrogen dioxide. However, I did do an analysis. The closest monitors are up in the northeast. I think it's like our Military Park Monitor. There's one of the Detroit Police Station, and those are kind of the highest one-hour concentrations across the state. And even using the worst-case monitor for one-hour nitrogen dioxide as background with this facility, it would still meet that National Ambient Air Quality Standard.
Eric, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Just that the Allen Park Monitor, you're right, it doesn't measure for NO2 or NO or NOx, but it does have an NOI monitor there, which is just a different nitrogen compound. We just don't use it to put in two max levels at all.
Really good questions, Brian.
Did you have any?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted that, that statement of the NOI measurements. If NOI levels were found to be high, would that be indicative then also that NO2 levels are high and when there be any actions taken to correct it?
I see that both of you are thinking. We might not have an answer for that one immediately, but we can get back to you on that one.
Yeah, for that, I'll be honest with you. I'm, I don't know enough about the chemistry between the difference between NO2 and NOI to really know an answer to that. I do know we have, you know, a few other monitors, I think four of them, maybe four or five NOx monitors in the northeast of the facility, and they are all entertainment right now. And if they weren't, then we would do something about it, for sure.
Jennifer, if I may sort of interject, because this is something that, you know, I can address. So reactive nitrogen is NOx plus other nitrogen-bearing compounds, like nitric acid, for instance, and other longer-lived species. So if reactive nitrogen or NOI is elevated, there's other compounds that could be elevated in that family. For instance, there could be a lot of nitric acid, so it's not necessarily an indication that NO2 would be high.
Yep, thanks so much, Dr. Oligar. Appreciate that. So thank you so much for those questions, Brian. Did you have any other follow-ups, or was that helpful? Or creating more questions? Okay, yeah, no, we appreciate the question.
Okay, thank you.
No, no problem. So just waiting to see if anybody else has any other questions for us. I'll give you guys another minute, just in case. And if we don't have any other questions, just to let you know, folks are maybe... And if we don't have any other questions, just to let you know, folks are maybe thinking of some questions or working on typing some questions in. We will go pretty immediately to the public hearing portion. So Brian, I think you have your hand up again. Possibly. Let me see if you do or not. Did you have another question?
No, I don't think I.
Okay, all right, no, you're fine. No, you're totally fine. Thank you. All right, sorry about that. I think I clicked your mute button a little too quick. I didn't mean to do that. All right. So yeah, usually how we do this, especially on the virtual, is we don't have that set time for the hearing to start. Because we don't want folks to just have to, you know, hang out if there's not other questions. So I'm gonna slowly move over to that dilly-dally a little bit more for you. I wish I had some good stories to tell right now, but I, I don't have any good ones. You know, sometimes I can come up with something good, but I don't have anything right now. Except I am glad it's not as hot today as it was yesterday, I will say that. All right, well, panelists, I don't see any other questions. So if you guys would like to turn your cameras off. And then Dr. Oligar, if you would like to turn your camera on, we will get moving toward that hearing portion of the evening. All right, so just to remind everybody, once we officially open the hearing, which I will do by reading. An official statement that I will admit is a little bit boring, but that's kind of officially opening that meeting up. So just remember that if you make those comments on the record, we won't be able to respond to those comments. This is purely for the record to help Dr. Oligar make his decision on this project. And so we'll just be listening to you and, and I'll go over this too. But if you feel like you want to type your comment into the chat. You can do that as well. And like I said, there are other ways to submit comments if you're not ready to do so tonight. So with that being said, I'm going to just open the hearing. So good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I'm with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Or Eagle. I will be the hearing officer tonight. We have Dr. J Oligar, Air Quality Assistant Division Director, the decision maker for this permit application. Listening in on the hearing tonight. This hearing is for a proposed permit to install for River View Energy Systems LLC. Who is proposing to install a biomethane, also known as renewable natural gas recovery and pipeline quality renewable gas. Natural gas RNG plant for the existing landfill located at 20,000 Grange Road, River View, Michigan. I have a little bit of background information to share before we begin. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impact on public health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can install and operate the equipment they are requesting, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health-based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed installation and operation of this equipment. An opportunity to provide information the department may use in deciding whether to approve the permit to install. Or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note, the proposed permit to install is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be issued at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic, and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law. Not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision. The public comment period began May 11th, 2022 and will end at midnight on June 27th, 2022. Additional information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing, by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments or changes. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list. Anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and, if applicable, the approved permit. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time via the email address we will provide or call into the comment. Call your comment into the public comment voicemail. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment. I'll read aloud, read aloud all comments you submit unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you may speak. We will try to limit your comment time to three minutes, although we don't have a lot of folks on tonight. So if you need a little bit more than three minutes, that'll be fine. If you are speaking, I'll let you know when you have about 30 seconds left and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised. But please be patient because the technology does have some limitations to that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a comment. So if you would like to make a comment, you can, again, raise your hand using the raised hand icon. The bottom of your screen, or if you would like to put your comment in the chat, you can do that as well. So I'm gonna give you a few minutes to do that if you'd like to, or decide if you want to raise your hand or not. All right, Brian, hold on one second. If you can just state your name for the record and then go ahead and make your comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Webb. My comment is based upon the technical fact sheet that was provided to the public. And the comments made today that we have a general understanding that the NO2 levels are predicted to exceed the PSD sill. And have an understanding that they are below the maximum for the NAA QS standards. And also having a common understanding is agreed today that. The closest monitoring station that can measure NO2 levels is, is in northeast Detroit. My concern is that we do not have a way of accurately measuring those NO2 levels. Once the, if, if the permit is passed and our RES becomes operative. That we don't have a way of measuring those levels accurately. So my statement would be, is that if the permit is. Approved and RES is built these systems. And NO2 is released into the air, that they also be responsible for providing a. Air quality monitoring system that is capable of measuring the NO2 levels. And that that information be provided to the Air Quality Division and also residents upon request. That is my final statement. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian. Appreciate you making a comment tonight. Give folks just a couple more minutes to see if anyone else would like to make a comment. Okay, seeing no other comments at this point, Dr. Oligar, are you okay with me closing the hearing? Okay, thank you so much. See that your head was nodding, so I'll take that as a yes.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay, Brian. No, you're fine.
I'm just noticing like for myself, when I clicked on chat, it says that it's disabled. And I just wanted to make sure that you have it enabled in case there were people from the public that wanted to make a chat comment.
No, I'm so sorry. I should have been saying the question and answer box. So yep, the question and answer box. If folks want to type a comment into the question and answer box, that's what we're using. You are correct that the chat is disabled, Brian. So thank you so much for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and officially close the hearing. And then we'll go over some other ways that folks can still submit comments because we do have plenty of time. So thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on June 27th, 2022. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed. Thank you so much. Okay, so now that that part is officially closed, I want to go over a few other things just in case folks want to still submit comments. Because we want to be very clear that there's definitely still time to get those in. You can submit those in writing if you'd like to. The address is here on the screen, but that's at a NetSwitzer Permit Section Manager at Eagle. Air Quality Division and that's P O Box 3260 at Lansing, Michigan, 48909. We do get a lot of comments through our email box, which is also perfectly acceptable. And that email address is eagle. E G L E dash A Q D dash P T I Public Comments and P T I Public Comments is all one word. At Michigan.gov. Or sometimes easiest way for folks is just to give us a call and leave your comment on our voicemail. And that number is 517-284-0900. We've been seeing that used a lot more frequently, which is actually really nice. So if you want to find more information, the best place to go is Michigan.gov/ Eagle Air Public Notice. And Eagle Air Public Notice is all one word. And we have a lot of information there. You can actually find all the public comment periods that are open for Air Quality Division. Whether it be air permits, like the one we're talking about tonight. Renewable operating permits or Title V permits, like John mentioned earlier, the landfill has one of those. So if you're interested in that, when those are open for comment, rules that are open for comment. All, everything. We have some toxic air contaminants that are open for comment that Doreen and I just worked on getting the, the comment period started. This week as well. So any of those things you can find on that webpage as well, if you're interested in other air quality things outside of this. But you can find specific information about this project, including the proposed project summary, which is a pretty high-level. Sort of overview of the project, that technical fact sheet that Brian Webb brought up a few times. That kind of digs deeper into those rules and regulations, more into the modeling and the, the things that we use to develop that. Final draft permit that we're here to talk about tonight. You'll also find those proposed permit terms and conditions. And then we will post the links to this meeting there as well. So by attending this meeting, you will get final information. So we appreciate that. One of the things that we do include in that is the response to comments. So any comments that we receive during the public comment period. Will put together a response to those comments and share that with everybody as well, along with the final decision that's made on the project. I'm just putting on the screen here really quickly, the folks that you can contact if you have further questions. So anybody who was on the panel tonight, feel free to reach out, ask us any further questions that you might have. We're happy to have those one-on-one conversations. And a lot of times, that's a little bit more conducive to getting the information you want. Than a situation like this. Because as anybody who knows me will say. Conversations with me usually lead to me asking, you know, 10 more questions. So we appreciate that. And we certainly don't mind folks reaching out to us at all. All right, so thank you so much. Again, we'll share the recording of the presentation on Eagle's YouTube channel. And you can find any other public meetings, recordings on there as well, if you're interested in those kinds of things. But we do really greatly appreciate folks joining us for these. We know we have a lot of other things to do with your evening. And we know that this public comment opportunities are very important for you, but they're also really, really important for us. And it makes our jobs a lot better and it makes these kinds of permits, however they turn out, better for everyone. So again, greatly appreciate your time and hope everybody has a great evening.